Nine o'clock, and I'm going to ask if we stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance. And we're honored here this morning to have Bishop Brandon.
Amen.
If you want to come up to the microphone and offer the invocation this morning.
Dear God, our total Father, grateful for this morning to be able to meet together as for the Board of Commissioners, Commissioners Meeting, and grateful for our county commissioners for their service and bless them in their efforts to further progress Washington County. Please bless that as various initiatives are discussed and decisions are made that we'll be able to have decisions that are effective and efficient and that will further progress Washington County here and are the best for the citizens of Washington County. And say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for September 23rd. And for the record, I'll be abstaining from that vote. I was left, I was here that day, but I left abruptly during the meeting. So we have a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and second for approval, all in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, four and one. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, reports and comments. Randy Wagner, do you like to go first?
Good morning. I don't have a whole lot there. Just we got a groundbreaking today out at New School Downsville, the board, and that's what's on our agenda today. And we have an evening meeting with Clear Spring also. That's all I have, John.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Letterman?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. One of the cool things about being a commissioner is, is that it gives us an opportunity to meet the many wonderful people who make up our communities. Saturday was no exception. Saturday, the 18th, my wife and I were able to get to celebrate with Zion Baptist Church on Bethel Street, the 100th birthday of Sarah Woodson. Great ceremony. Zion Baptist and Sarah have served our community of Hagerstown and Washington County magnificently. And so it was a pleasure to spend hours with Sarah and that congregation. My pleasure, and to them, congratulations. And finally, this morning, it's that time of year, and our children are costumed, they're running around our neighborhoods. Please look out for them, expect them to be exactly where you don't expect them to be. So please, please, please be careful. That's all I have this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Harvey?
Yeah, thank you to everyone. Not much to report. Saturday, I did meet with, visited the Islamic Center on, on Saturday when they had their open house from 12 to 2:30. And it was an engaging event and appreciated the community opening their doors to introduce themselves to people in the community who were curious and stopped by. So that was, that was good. And I had a follow-up meeting with several members of, of the mosque as well as, you know, the Imam from there and on Monday. And that, that was engaging too, interesting. And then Sunday, Randy and I went to the synagogue and heard an update on issues from Israeli embassy officials that deal with the situation for Jews in Israel and Gaza and some of the concerns that they have. So it was an interesting weekend for those types of issues. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Good morning, everyone. Highlight of my week was attending the cancer awareness, there are many breast cancer step in stride at HCC. Dr. Klauber, thank you for those folks being able to use your campus for that. As many of you know, my mom was a double breast cancer survivor, so that's always an important event. So thanks to Ms. Hurst, the HCC, and all the organizers and sponsors of that event for bringing awareness. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Not to be repetitive, but I know last week I made comments, but I see Dr. Joshi here in the audience this morning. And I did spend several days and a couple nights at Meredith's three weeks ago. And thank you, Dr. Joshi, and all your fine staff. I had a wonderful experience. Didn't like the fact I got poked and with needles and tubes and probes and everything else for three days, but it all turned out very well. And thank you for such wonderful service to this community. So also, I'd, part of my notes were in, to follow up to Commissioner Letterman's comments, time, it's that time of year where the, we'll turn the clocks back, I guess, next week, and it'll get dark earlier in the evening. And my sentiments also, there's children out there running around all excited, trick or treat and trunk or treat and hallelujah carnival up at Salvation Army in the West End and just a number of things. And just asked our citizens to, to be on alert, be on the watch. And it's that time of year. So give a little extra caution. And so just everyone heads up and be mindful of those around you in your neighborhoods, and especially, you know, the younger folks. With that, I think anything we've missed, we look forward to the groundbreaking this afternoon. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to staff comments. And Dawn, I think you're up.
Good morning. Dawn Marcus, County Clerk. I am requesting a consensus to approve the proposed 2026 Board of County Commissioners Meeting Schedule.
Okay.
Second.
It's, it's a consensus, just a consensus.
Okay, good. Everyone good?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think I noted that it is subject to change over time as we see fit, but this is the printed schedule for now. So, okay, consensus? Good.
Yes.
Very good. Is that it? Okay, Michelle Gordon, County Administrator.
Thank you. It's been a fairly quiet week. I've attended various meetings with staff and other local agencies through, throughout the last week. And I do have findings from three OMA opinions that I'd like to read. First one is 19-246 for 2025 dated September 17th of 2025. The complainant alleged that the Washington County Board of County Commissioners violated the Open Meetings Act by improperly meeting in secret without notice and without giving the public the opportunity to observe. The OMA applies only to a public body when it actually meets. Before considering whether the county board has violated the act, the OMA Board must first determine whether a meeting took place. They cannot make that determination. Whether a meeting occurred depends on whether they accept the complainant's version of the events or the county boards. They are not set up to resolve disputes of fact. Therefore, they find no violation of the act. The second one is 19-249 from 2025 dated September 22nd of 2025. A member of the body at its next meeting must announce the violation if a violation has occurred orally and summarize that opinion made by the OMA Board. The complainants here allege that the Board of County Commissioners violated this requirement because in the complainant's view, the county board president failed to adequately summarize a July 2025 opinion in which they found that the county board violated the act for the reasons stated below. They found that the county board president's summary of the opinion complied with the act. No violation was found to have occurred. The third is 19-271, 2025 dated October 6, 2025. The complainant alleges that the Washington County Board of County Commissioners violated the Open Meetings Act by failing to provide the public enough detail about a county job opening that the board intended to discuss in closed session. The complainant alleged that the board violated the act because in his view, the agenda for the board's July 29, 2025 meeting was too vague about a county job opening that the board intended to discuss in closed session. The complainant asserted that the county board referred to, to the last in terms as vague as possible. The OMA Board found no violation of the act. And although the board customarily provides some detail in meeting agendas about the topics that the board intends to discuss in closed session, the act does not require any such detail. To the extent that the complainant's concerned with the board's written closing statement, we likewise found no violation. The closing statements indicate that the county board intended to discuss, among other things, a hiring recommendation for an open county position, a description that, as they understand it, the complainant thinks was too vague. The public body is not required to provide a level of detail that would compromise the confidentiality of the session. In areas where the need for confidentiality, confidentiality is acute, they have recognized that it is not up to them to assess the level of detail that preserves that confidentiality. Therefore, they found no violation of the act. And that's everything that I have.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, with that, we'll move right along under tab one, HCC Dental Hygiene Program, Recognizing Dental Hygiene Month. Dr. Klauber, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It is that time of year again. And I know you talked about all those trick or treaters out getting all the candy. It's great. Just make sure they brush their teeth when they get finished. We're passing out some gifts from our dental hygiene clinic for commissioners and staff and anybody else that wants them. Get your own toothbrush, toothpaste. Recognize Dental Hygiene Month. As you know, a few years ago, we doubled the size of our dental hygiene program up to 38 students a year. And our, we run a clinic. It's not a free clinic. It's a low-cost clinic. We offer services that are, we're allowed to by the state of Maryland at, at cost. And we, I always come to you once a year, not only to celebrate Dental Hygiene Month, but to, to ask you to tell your constituents about this clinic. And if they need to get dental services done, consider us because we need patients. And we need a great variety of patients. We need young people. We need older people, people with good teeth and people with wine stained, coffee stained teeth as well. So with that, I hope that you will take that in consideration, especially as you're starting to move into campaign mode in the next year, when you're out meeting with people and talking with them, mention the HCC Dental Clinic because we would certainly love to have more patients.
Dr. Klauber, how do they get, how does, what's the procedure for getting in touch and, and requiring, requesting an appointment?
There's a card in the, in the bag with all the contact information for the clinic. All they need to do is call in. We have a receptionist there, and she'll be glad to schedule them for an appointment.
And did your students not hold a little seminar or something at your student center?
We did. We did a little health seminar just a couple of weeks ago. Did, yeah, I know, I saw on Facebook that you were there. I wasn't there that day, but they, they did some checks. They did also blood pressure, I think.
Yeah, their personal skills were very good, by the way. I wanted to make sure you know that. The way they spoke to people, they were very good with that skill.
That's good. I hope their medical skills were good, too.
You know, my blood pressure.
I'm sure they were.
My blood pressure was 122 over 80.
That's excellent. So anyway, so thank you very much for your support. And if you could send us some patients, we certainly would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And while you're here, and it's my understanding, we've got the medical professionals here also, that good dental hygiene and oral examination is the first sign of what else, whatever else may be airing you in health-wise.
Absolutely. Oh, and one, Mr. Chairman, one thing before I leave, I mean, also mention, next month, celebrate our veterans. Our hygiene clinic will offer free services to 100 veterans. So do that. Thank you all.
I think, I think the protocol is, I know we have no proclamation or certificate, but you want to come up, I think the commissioners want to get a picture with you.
Okay.
I was getting orders. I'm just following orders. Should you hold the dental bag?
No.
Nope. Okay, next is item tab number two, Meredith Health Incorporated 120th Anniversary Proclamation. Gentlemen, come on up to...
Great. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much for your time today. I'm Malik Joshi, President and CEO of Meredith Health. And I'm joined by Father Dunin, who's a Meredith Health Board Member and been associated with the healthcare organization for over two decades. And Mr. Jim Kirchwell, President of the Greater Hagerstown Committee, also on the Meredith Health Board. We are hitting our 120th anniversary this month, 120 years. And so we are just, first of all, honored to be in front of you and to, to say thank you for allowing us to take care of the community. As you'll see in the video and everything we do, one of our values is community obsessed. And we are truly community obsessed. We view this as our community, our workforce, our team, and a healthy community, a thriving community connects all the dots of economy, health, and of course, just living in a terrific community. So we're here to share a video, if we have teed up, if that's all right. Hi, everyone. I'm Malik Joshi, President and CEO of Meredith Health. This year, we celebrate a milestone, 120 years of taking care of this community. That is generations of families just like yours that we have the honor to do so. Please listen to Carrie Adams, the Meredith Medical Center Chief Operating Officer, share our story.
120 years ago, our community came together to open a 10-bed hospital in Hagerstown. Today, that spirit of neighbors caring for neighbors lives on as Meredith Health. On October 26, 1905, Washington County Hospital opened its doors at Potomac and Fairground Avenues. Families donated fruits, chickens, and even ice cream to help feed patients. From the beginning, the hospital belonged to the community. New construction, modern technology, and dedicated staff members transformed a small-town hospital into a regional leader. We became a trauma center, opened Robinwood Medical Center, and launched a top cancer center. Today, Meredith Health serves more than 200,000 people across the tri-state area with advanced care in a state-of-the-art medical center, a growing network of specialty practices, and a team of more than 4,000 employees. Our auxiliary members have volunteered millions of hours, and our mission to improve the health of our community is at the heart of everything we do. With the construction of the Meredith School of Osteopathic Medicine and our recent affiliation with Brook Lane Health Services, we are building the future of healthcare right here in our community. From those first 10 beds more than a century ago, to the regional health system we are today, Meredith has always been committed to you, your family, your friends, and your neighbors. It's who we are and who we hope to be for the next 120 years and beyond.
Thank you, Carrie. As you can see, Meredith is community obsessed. We appreciate the opportunity to take care of your grandparents decades ago and your grandchildren in the years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our mission to improve healthcare, health, and medical education in our community. Thank you for allowing us to take care of you, providing expert care close to home. Thank you again for the opportunity. I wanted to just open up to Father Dunin and Mr. Kirchwell, if they just have anything to add in terms of where we are as an organization today.
I want to, I'm, within the organization, I am the Chair of the Board of Emsom, the School of Osteopathic Medicine. I wanted to thank the Commissioners for their enthusiastic support of this exciting project, which you've heard me say many times before, is not just providing future doctors in the areas that we need them in this area of need, but also doing a lot for our community socioeconomically, bringing in what I sometimes describe that missing demographic of young professionals and training professionals, and getting more of, of that constituency in our community. So that's very exciting for us.
And again, I just want to thank the Commissioners for their support over the years. I know when I joined the board, the Meredith Board, it was just to try to get a little more understanding of that, that topic. That was something that in my background, I didn't have a lot of experience with. And the years I've been on the committee, I'm now on like our Audit and Business Integrity Committee. I chair that. And we look at, you know, the internal operations and how we work. But one thing I learned through COVID was how important a local hospital is for this community. We were able to turn things around quickly. It was obvious that the patients and the people in Washington County and the region around here were a number one priority. And when you look at the things that we did and accomplished during that part, and that was in large part to your partnership and some of your help with some of the projects that were built, helped fast-tracking those and getting those done, it just made it so clear at why we have to protect having this local hospital and one that really does put the patients first. So I know we have things that we always try to improve upon, and we're always working on that. I think when you look at our leapfrog grades and things over the years, we've had multiple years of A grades in a row. There's a lot of focus on that stuff. But we really are excited about the future because I think we took the approach that the best defense against the closure of rural hospitals all over the country has been a good offense. And that is why we did things like the Meredith School of Medicine residency program and a lot of the other programs that we've tried to be, as being proactive and a leader in this market. And I'm, I think our community should be grateful that we have such a good operation. Thank you.
You know, I, Dr. Joshi, Father Dunin, and Jim, it, I can count for 75 of those years, but the under 45 escaped me. But I, I have to say, I was, I think I told you this before, Dr. Joshi, I was sitting in the parking lot the other day. And, you know, me being very familiar with the old Washington County Hospital, I don't remember the one before that. But then I just look at that complex. You just look at it, and a relatively short amount of time, it seems to me anyways, Dad always says that time goes faster as you get older. But it, it just a complex compared to what I remember. It was just, seemed like it grew overnight almost. It was just amazing. And we just saw the aerial of it. So, you know, and, and I've always had good experiences there. And I've run into you many times there with family. And so I, I appreciate all you do, really do.
Thank you. I, I should note that Meredith is the largest private employer in the five western counties of Maryland. We're just under 4,500 employees. So if you go from Carroll West, we're the largest private employer. And, and our community, our workforce, they're the same. And so we, I, I will open it up. I just do want to say thank you. We really appreciate it. It's our community. We're here to take care of our community. And we will continue to do everything we can to make that happen.
Other comments? Thank you. I do have a proclamation to present. Any fellow Commissioners want to present this, or?
You go ahead. We'll join you for a photo.
We'll come over here at the flags, gentlemen.
On behalf of my fellow Commissioners, I'd like to present this proclamation, 120th Anniversary of Meredith Health Incorporated. Whereas after receiving its charter from the state of Maryland in 1904, Washington County Hospital opened in the old M and P Motor Residence at Potomac and Fairground Avenues. The hospital had 10 beds. During the first year of Operation, 106 patients were admitted to the hospital. And whereas over the past 120 years, much has changed in the healthcare industry, both locally and nationally. The health system in Washington County has evolved and is now known as Meredith Health, Inc. It operates a 327-bed Level III trauma center, five physical therapy locations, three ambulatory surgery centers, two retail pharmacies, multiple physician practices representing over 20 specialties across Washington County, and has 275 providers in the Meredith Medical Group. And whereas Meredith Health, Inc. is also affiliated with Brook Lane Health Services to expand mental health services and opened the Meredith School of Osteopathic Medicine to train physicians and shrink the shortage of doctors locally and across the nation. It is the first medical school to open in Maryland in more than a century. And whereas the mission of the organization has stayed the same for the past 120 years to improve the health of the community by, by providing expert care close to home. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, do hereby celebrate and recognize the 120th Anniversary of Meredith Health Incorporated in Washington County, and ask all citizens to join in observing this significant milestone. Presented and signed by all five of the... Next item under Tab 3 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So we have folks here this morning to... Jeff, you want to do this one?
No, 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 no.
Well, you guys are going to make me work for it today. Good morning.
Good morning. How is everybody? Thank you for the important proclamation that we're going to be receiving today, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. On behalf of CASA, our community survivors and advocates, I'm honored to accept it. Domestic violence affects individuals of every age, race, gender, and background. It impacts not only survivors, but children, families, and entire communities. By coming together to raise awareness, we not only honor those who have experienced abuse, but we also commit to supporting prevention, healing, and justice. This proclamation is more than words. It's a public declaration that we see survivors, we hear them, and we stand with them. It's a call to action to continue the work of education, advocacy, and change. Thank you for helping shine a light on this critical issue. I feel that together, we can create a future where everyone can feel safe, respected, and free from violence.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to share some statistics with you this morning. We had the privilege last, this past Monday, of attending a strangulation class at Meredith's with the forensic nurses. And although we always celebrate October as Breast Cancer Awareness, it is also Domestic Violence and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month. 48% of women with breast cancer are also victims of domestic violence and intimate partner violence. And since January to October, CASA, Inc., as an agency, has responded to over 2,000 hospital calls regarding domestic violence victims and intimate partner victims. 20% of that would be for sexual assault victims. Whereas 10% were strangulation cases, 92% of people presenting from strangulation cases up to 10 years after strangulation, they end up having some kind of brain injury. Every nine seconds in the United States, a woman is assaulted or beaten. In the United States, an average of 20 people are physically abused by intimate partners every minute. This equates to more than 10 million abuse victims annually. One in three women and one in four men have been physically abused by an intimate partner. One in five women and one in seven men have been severely physically abused by an intimate partner. One in seven women and one in 18 men have been stalked. Stalking causes the target to fear she or he or someone close to him or her will be harmed or killed. Between 21 and 60% of victims of domestic violence lose their jobs due to reasons stemming from the abuse. Between 2008 and 2025, in the workplace, 22% of workplace homicides among women have been from intimate partner violence. And so the work that we do in Washington County, it affects everyone. It affects every walk of life. It affects the children. It affects the parents. It affects the victim. And our goal is to turn each victim to a survivor and each survivor into a thriver. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ladies, come up to the flag. And we have a proclamation to present. Again, it's my honor, on behalf of my fellow Commissioners, present this proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of Washington County. According to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, 34.4% of Maryland women and 28.8% of Maryland men experience intimate partner physical violence, intimate partner rape, and/or intimate partner stalking. And whereas, we must work together to educate our community on how to prevent domestic violence and how to support survivors. Staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs in Washington County encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence. Through prevention, education, and increased awareness, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing domestic violence in Washington County and hold perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. Whereas, Washington County strongly supports the efforts of the national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what domestic violence is, how to prevent it, and how to help survive, connect with services, survivors connect with services. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, do hereby recognize the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to speak out against domestic violence and support efforts to educate young people about healthy relationships centered on respect, support victims and survivors, and to support the efforts of victim advocates, service providers, healthcare providers, and the legal system in working to end domestic violence. And signed by all five of the County Commissioners. Thank you very much. Thanks for all the children.
Thank you.
Next item under Tab 4, Washington County Community Coalition, recap of 2025 and requests for support for 2026. Good morning, gentlemen.
Commissioners.
Jim Kirchwell's back with us.
He is. Twofer. Twofer. Well, thanks for allowing us to come before this body again. Again, Paul Frye, President, Washington County Chamber of Commerce. Also, we're the managing partner for the Community Coalition. Our 21st year. And we are happy to report that we have another great agenda for the coming year and want to thank the Commissioners for the past support. As we say every year, in Annapolis, we have a great reputation in Washington County for coming with one voice. And so we worked through the agenda. We've done that for the last couple of months. And we go to Annapolis with one voice. We have a great reputation as well for our annual reception we have in January. With that, Jim's going to talk about what we accomplished this past session and what we're going to be working on in the coming session with our partners. And then we'll follow up with the reception after that. Jim?
Okay. In your packet, we have a summary there of how things fared last year. When I say what we accomplished, that is accomplished as a community. So the Community Coalition was part of that, or delegation was part of that. And all of our individual partner groups and staff all contributed to try to make this happen. So we certainly think we had a good year. It was a pretty tight budget year, as we all know. However, overall, we brought back about $70 million. The big chunk of that, of course, was the Interstate 81 money getting restored that came back for Phase 2. There's a good article in the paper today for the citizens that talks about how that project's going to be advancing over the next three years. 81 was our biggest one. We also got $6 million for HCC for some of the renovations. The visitor's center got some money for our visitor's center downtown. Hagerstown is looking at citing a new public safety building down the road. They got a feasibility study money. Also, we did pass a bill that raised the cap on the heritage area funding. This is a grant funding tourism program that many of our counties and our small towns have taken advantage of over the years. Unfortunately, though, after that bill did get passed, it got vetoed. So right now, we're still waiting to see what happens on that. We weren't able to get some funding for the Public Safety Center for the county for Phase 3 that was, had to do with your high base storage. But we're going to be going after that again this year. Route 11 Bridge relocation, again, we're still looking into that issue. And Smithburg was also a newer partner last year that was looking for some sewer and water upgrades for their town system that wasn't able to get any money. We also have what's called a watch list. So some other issues that are liable is supposed to pay close attention to. The library funding and USMH funding, HCC funding, K-12 funding. We monitored that. Overall, there were some ups and downs on that. But overall, we felt we fared pretty well. Unfortunately, every year on the watch list, we do try to track shifting liabilities from state to local government. As you could see on that list, Washington County did get stuck with about $3 million in additional costs that they have to pick up that were traditionally state liabilities that had to do with some pension issues, some ESTAT, property assessment issues, the costs that had to be picked up as well, some teacher costs and some special education costs. Our gaming revenue continues to be untouched, which we put that on every year just to make sure that money stays the way it's intended to do. Highway user money, I know that did not get cut. There's concerns of that dropping off in a couple of years after that bill kind of expires. But right now, highway user revenues tend to be protected by the counties and the state seems to be supporting that. On the next page, there was just a few other local legislative highlights that got passed. There was some county tax incentive bill that was passed, which helped with our economic development efforts. Meredith's is able to raise scholarship money with their new school that needed legislation that got passed. HCC also got some limited jurisdiction for their police force to assist the sheriff deputies off-site when they need to. And then there was a bill passed at the state level that allows judicial officers that are killed in the line of duty to qualify for property tax exemptions. And that, of course, applies back to Judge Wilkinson. There's some other capital projects and other groups kind of worked on there. And I'm not going to go through that whole list. But there was some district court renovation expenses that came through. The Boys and Girls Club in town. Meredith's Commons, which is their student housing project, got some money. The new Downsfield Elementary School got some money. So there was another $30 million of money that came back to the county that was not part of the Coalition's agenda. But together, that's $100 million bucks that came back for Washington County. So that's a, that's a pretty good year and a tough budget year. And I appreciate everybody's support for that. Do we have any questions on that side? Before we get to the agenda?
Yeah, thank you. Did you mention Hagerstown for Public Safety Center?
Yeah, they got the study money.
Well, here's my question. And not to be controversial.
Sure.
We have one already underway, successful, breaking ground for new and new facilities and training down there. I just made a question. Are we in competition for money with limited funds in Annapolis?
This one's a little different. They're looking to re, yeah, they're looking to relocate their police department. They're in the really old building there off to the side. This is, and, and the reason they call it Public Safety is because they may put some of their fire operations in there as well.
That's a good explanation because it differentiates us from, I don't want to be in competition with them and vice versa, as me being respectful for the city by asking that.
They're looking, they know that's a longer-term project. This is just the first stage. It kind of looks at what are their needs for the HPD to move into a new building, get a sense of what that property, where the property could be.
Their current buildings were my dad left for World War II. Were a train, too. So it's an old building.
Well, it's a beautiful historic building. And hopefully, we get a good reuse there. But this is going to be something a little bit down the line. This is, they won't be funding that. I know they're not going after funding for that yet this year because they still have to wait for this study to get done to get a sense of what they're going to need.
Yeah, and I say that out of respect.
This is just part of a longer-term plan.
And this was just to replace their administrative offices?
That makes sense.
Just moving on to the agenda for this year, you'll see in your packet, we highlighted those in green. Those are all the ones that got approved for the agenda. Of course, you'll see some familiar faces. I-81, we did get Phase 2 done, but that only gets us halfway through the project. Now we're looking at design funding, engineering funding for Phases 3 and 4, and then construction as well as plan. Got to keep the pressure up for that item.
Yeah, keep the pressure up. Now, they restored $64 million, correct?
Yes.
And is there an estimate on what the total cost for Phase 2 would be? And the initial funding will come when? In your estimation?
For Phase 2, all, you know, the majority of the funding there, we think, is in place. They will have some new stormwater costs that they're going to have to deal with. But right now, we're not concerned about Phase 2. We think that's fully funded and completed. Phases 3 and 4, we've asked MDOT for their estimate on what the design funding would be. I think early estimates from your staff were around $10 million. But that's kind of soft on what that'll be.
Fully funded for Phase 2 means, do they have that money already allocated, reserved?
Yes, it's allocated in multiple years, out in the next five years of the CTP.
Because that really wasn't made too clear at the transportation meeting the other day. And that's one of the reasons why I was asking that.
I mean, you know, until they award the contract, I wouldn't say, let's check that box. Because I used to be comfortable doing that, but then we lost the money a few years ago. So right now, I would say, you know, it's long, once this, one of those contracts gets awarded, we can check that box and move on to the Phases 3 and 4.
WBL posted something about I-97 being awarded $137 million to widen theirs. And I'm waiting on, because it was sent to me by a friend. Why not us? So that's why I...
Well, and of course, our concern is, you know, it took, we originally got design and engineering funding back in like 216, 17 for Phase 2. And they kind of dragged that out for six, seven, eight years. And then we still find there's a design problem late in the process that's going to hold this up a little bit. So that's why we are pushing so hard for design and engineering for Phases 3 and 4 because it's going to take them at least three years to get that approved. And we want to make sure that we are ready to move forward with the next phase as Phase 2 completes.
I guess, pardon me, the strategy is we get Phase 1 done, Phase 2 done. Phase 3 and 4 may not happen as fast, but we're progressing towards the completion of all of 81.
And each, in each phase for 3 and 4 are estimated to cost approximately $100 million for each phase. So additional funding in addition, which includes the $10 million for design, So, additional funding in addition, which includes the $10 million for design, would need $200 million total in addition to Phase Two that's already been approved.
But, you know, it's important we continue to push for that. As I brought out to the secretary after the meeting last week, you know, more than half the desks we've had, the recent desks in the last five years, have been on Phases Three and Four. So, about five, I think, of the 11 desks were on Phases One and Two, and then another six on Phases Three and Four. So, from a safety element, you know, Phase Two, it's great to get I-70 up to Halfway Boulevard. That's a tough area, but we have just as much difficulties between Halfway and particularly Route 40, and now we see a lot of the traffic picking up around the airport and things as that continues to grow. So, hopefully, we can, you know, we'll keep pushing for that one. I know it's, they're kind of tired of hearing about it, but it's like, well, fund it, you won't have to hear about it anymore. So, and then moving on, the air traffic control tower, I know you guys are much aware about that, but we're kind of elevating that in the conversation this year. County transit program expansion, get some funding to get the construction completed for that and finish it off. I-70, I-65 is still on there. The Route 11 Bridge is still on there for Williamsport, trying to get the final feedback from their environmental study and moving forward with that side. Then, you know, as I, as I think we brought up at the MDOT meeting, and you guys were there, this new scoring system and how they handle rural roads, bridges, and transit, how they put that together is a real concern. Phases Three and Four came in 37th out of 40th in one of their first draft formulas that they put together. They're still tweaking that. We're hoping to make some improvements to that. But whatever formula they have, if I-81, Phases Three and Four doesn't rank in the top 10, you've got to question whether that formula is really put together right if you're going to be a state that calls for no fatalities. So, I think that's an important thing for everyone to watch, particularly the rural counties, and I would strongly encourage the commissioners to speak to your neighbors and your colleagues in the rural counties and saying, are you following this? Because if that's the way they start allocating funding out and rural highways and bridges don't score very well, because the way it's weighted, the way the formula is done, that's going to cause a lot of trouble long-term for every project we try to put in in the future. So, that again is on our list. The Public Safety Training Building, we're going back for another try for the high bay training areas that we're trying to put out there. Smithburg's going back again for water and sewer. There's an item there, it's in either yellow or red in your packet, that talks about legislation to help with first responders dropping off patients at the crisis center. We did find out just a week ago, when doing some research that Meredith was looking at, that that legislation isn't needed. There's actually a local fix. There's some waivers that our EMS and fire personnel, police personnel can sign that could allow them to drop a patient directly off at the crisis center without worrying about liability issues if they don't drop them off at the emergency department first. One of the goals of the crisis center was to try to divert that kind of traffic out of the ED into the crisis center, and we think that's fixed locally. So, we, that item, the hospital said we could drop it from the list. Williamsport Library is ready to start building, so they're going to be pushing for their capital funding. So, that's elevated up again this year. HCC wants to restructure the Scholar Drive that routes the back entrance into campus. Now that Professional Boulevard, the final phase, is almost complete, there's going to be more traffic going through there. That needs improved. Washington County Museum of Fine Arts is asking for 1.5 million. They originally had that money three or four years ago, but as the project wasn't ready to proceed, that money got pulled back. They're going to be going back and asking for that again. Then we still have our visitor's center, the lift the cap on the heritage area of funding, and the city is asking for the Field House to be exempt from personal property taxes, real and personal property taxes, similar to what the downtown Meredith Park Stadium is. So, they're asking to piggyback onto that legislation, so we're going to be adding that down there as well. Then the last items on our watch list are the same as before. Try to prevent shifting of state liabilities off to the county governments. Keep your highway user revenue protected, gaming revenue protected, K through 12, HCC, and USMH revenue protected. So, that kind of sums up the agenda for last year, or for next year. We'll be meeting with our delegation on the 5th of November to go over that. We certainly appreciate Michelle and her staff's work as they've come to the meetings. We're working with the staff now, develop the educational components that we put together in our booklet, so we hope to have that done here in the next week or two, and then meet with our delegation on the 5th. And I did meet with our lobbyist just last week, on Friday, we sat down for a little bit, went over the agenda. He's already started strategy on things and working on stuff, particularly, you know, I have him looking into the highway user, or the highway formula for roads and bridges to try to, you know, work his contacts down there to try to get some of those changes we hope to be made on that project.
They would need a motion. They are requesting funding of $10,000. That's the same amount of funding that we've been providing for a number of years. The funding source for that would be commissioner contingencies. There would need to be a motion to approve that funding.
Yeah, I support that motion.
I will say, a motion, we have a second, ready to vote. Any other thoughts or comments? Hearing none. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to say thank you. It looks like all the other partners, again, are on board this year. We met with the city about two weeks ago, and they're going to vote on it next week, so thank you for your support. And again, January 27th, we have our Day in Annapolis reception. We'll send out reminders for that, and we appreciate your support and look forward to another successful year in Annapolis. Thank you.
I'd just like, I'd just like to add, thank you for the day in Annapolis every year, and I hardly ever miss one. And the sentiment throughout Annapolis is, Washington County knows how to have a very nice reception, it's well-intended, and it's a knockout, and many of our state delegates and senators talk about it for days and weeks. So, it's very effective.
Thank you.
I know it costs a lot of money, it takes a lot of coordination, but the sentiment in Annapolis is, Washington County is the best, so.
We'll look for another one this coming year again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I am done for the day.
Yeah, I will say, there's a great picture in Page Online, Harold Brel, Jim encouraging the Secretary of Transportation on this, so you'll see that in Page Three.
Thank you. Next item under Tab Five is Contract Award under PUR 1714-3 Airport Capital Improvement Project Design and Bidding Proposals. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Andrew Eshelman, Director of Public Works. And before we get started, I do need to thank Jim and Paul. They've been great partners on the transportation front, and Jim even attended one of those meetings that we had with MDOT, we're working through the scoring system. So, he's a great asset for us to have. He's served on the Train Commission, advocating for our local interests as well as more or less other, I would say, rural counties that don't have maybe as many resources to help compete, to kind of pull our voice together. So, thank you to both of them.
Good morning. Neil Doran, Airport Director. So, the three identified projects are in the county's CIP. It's a rehabilitation of Taxi Way Alpha, the T-Hanger Taxi Lanes, and also Taxi Way Hotel. We're seeking a motion to empower the County Commission President to execute three task orders, Task Order Two, Three, and Four, with Airport Design Consultants Incorporated, ADCI, which is our on-call consultant. These will be later reimbursed under FAA and MAA grants.
He does have four recommended motions listed in the art, and I think it would be appropriate to approve each of those individually.
Okay.
What?
The first, the first motion is to award contracts for design bid services to Airport Design Consultants for Taxi Way A Rehabilitation Project of 342,000 and T-Hanger Taxi Lanes Rehabilitation totaling 203,987, and Taxi Way H totaling 161,957.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. As submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
So, that's combined into one motion at the top. Okay, sorry.
And just to clarify, motion one, was it Task Order Three? Neil, there's two Task Order Number Fours.
The typo in motion two, that's actually Task Order Proposal Three in the amount of 203,987.
Thank you.
So, we clear, we good?
It was, it was done in the first, in the first part of that, so it was all done in one motion, correct?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Next item under Tab Six, Bid Award PUR 1778, Rubrik Enterprise Data Protection for Information Technology Department.
Karen Baker, buyer in the purchasing department.
Josh Reale, CTO, Information Systems.
The recommendation we have today is Bid Award PUR 1778. Move to award the contract for Rubrik Enterprise Data Protection to the responsible responsive bidder, GHA Technologies Incorporated of Scottsdale, Arizona, who submitted the total lump sum of $288,842.64 for these services. Rubrik is an enterprise data backup and ransomware protection product consisting of hardware, software, and cloud services which currently protect county systems. The invitation to bid was listed on the state of Maryland's eMaryland Marketplace Advantage website and on the county's new online bidding website. Twenty persons or companies registered or downloaded the bid document online. Eleven bids were received as indicated on the attached bid tabulation, and funding is available in the department's operating budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Ready to vote, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under Tab Seven, Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase 25-0216, Navidea VPC License Renewal.
Randy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Josh Reale, CTO, Information System.
The first recommendation I have for you this morning is the Intergovernmental Cooperative Purchase INTG-25-0216. Move to authorize by resolution the approval for the purchase of the renewal of licensing for Invita VPC subscription from Dell Technologies of Round Rock, Texas, at the contracted price totaling $56,099.40. This is based on an Omnia Partners contract. The Invita VPS subscription is a per-user license for virtual machines. It enables users to access high-performance virtual PCs from any device, improving productivity and providing a superior user experience for demanding tasks. The subscription includes software and support for a period of five years. The Code of Public Law of Washington County provides that the Board of County Commissioners may procure goods and services through a contract entered into by another government entity as long as we abide by the same terms and conditions of that contract. And due to the economies of scale the contract has leveraged, there is a savings with this purchase. Funding is available in the department's software budget for this purchase.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Next item under Tab Eight is Sole Source Procurement PUR 1781, ESRI Cloud Model of Geograph, yes, Geographic Information Software Enterprise License Agreement. Mouthful.
Randy Kentner, Director of Purchasing.
Josh Reale, CTO, Information Systems.
The next recommendation is a sole source procurement PUR 1781. Move to authorize a sole source procurement of an ESRI Enterprise Licensing Agreement for the use by the Washington County Department of Information Technologies from Environmental Systems Research Institute out of Redlands, California, for a total sum of $360,900 for three consecutive one-year periods beginning January 4th, 2026. The annual cost per year will be $120,300. This is also contingent on the final approval of the agreement with the county attorney's office. ESRI is a software that drives all GIS-related operations for all county departments. It provides mapping and planning data essential to many aspects of public works, serves citizens, and inter-agency requests, and collaboration between, efforts between GIS data. The Department of Information Technologies wishes to apply Sections 1 through 106.2A1 and 2 of the Code of Public Laws of Washington County, Maryland, to the procurement requested. This section states that a sole source procurement is authorized and permissible when only one source exists that meets the county's needs, and that is the case for this software. This does, this approval does require four out of five commissioners to move ahead, and funding is available in the software budget for this department.
Discussion, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Next item under Tab Nine is Correction, Sole Source Procurement Award PUR 1776 for Mental Health Case Management Program, Adults and Older Adults.
Randy Kentner, Director of Purchasing. The last recommendation is a correction to a sole source procurement award PUR 1776. Motion to approve a correction to the amount of the award presented on October 14th, 2025 for a sole source procurement to Potomac Community Services for a mental health case management program. The correct amount of this request is $69,886. The original amount presented was $69,866. So, looking for the approval to correct this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second for approval as submitted and explained, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0. Thank you. Next item under Tab Ten, Memorandum of Understanding between the Town of Keyesville and the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County for Allowing Application of County Historic Property Tax Credits.
Good morning, Commissioners. Megan Jenkins, GIS Coordinator and Historic Preservation Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department.
Erin Weiss, Assistant County Attorney.
So, in April of 2024, the BOCC updated the Historic Properties Tax Credit Ordinance, and as part of that, there is now a definition for qualifying municipalities. In order for those municipalities to qualify, they either need to have their own permit review or a permit review signed through MOU with the county. That permit review is to ensure that activities proposed by the, by the permit are in conformance with the county's adopted design guidelines and the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. The permit review would be voluntary, as it's only going to apply to structures that are applying for that tax credit. The HDC did hold a workshop in July of 2025 where they invited municipalities to comment on a draft MOU formulated by the county's attorney's office to meet the needs of the ordinance, as well as to introduce the updated Historic Properties Tax Credit Program. Staff then coordinated with municipalities, which weren't able to attend, to answer any individual questions. We've also been going to town meetings to assist with presentations to their individual commissions. The Town of Keyesville reviewed the information and wishes to go ahead and execute an MOU to ensure they are qualifying municipalities so that any of their citizens that wish to participate in the town may voluntarily pursue these tax credits. So, we are seeking a motion to approve this MOU between the Town of Keyesville and the Board of County Commissioners. I'm happy to answer any questions in my head.
Discussion, questions, motion?
Motion to approve.
Concurrence with Keyesville, which I assume there is.
Yes, they have their signed copy.
It's in there. Motion, is that a second? Commissioner Klein?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Even though they're number one.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0. Thank you. Next item under Tab 11 is Adoption of Opioid Restitution Ordinance. Zach Kiefer, you're up.
Thank you, President Barr. Before you, excuse me, Zachary Kiefer, County Attorney. Commissioners, before you is a recommended motion to approve the adoption of the Administration of Opioid Restitution Funds Ordinance. This ordinance authorizes the adoption of the local abatement plan and governs the administration of the settlement funds in accordance with that plan. The state of Maryland requires the adoption of an approved local abatement plan in order for the county to receive its portion of the funds from the opioid litigation settlements. The Administration of Opioid Restitution Funds Ordinance authorizes the adoption of the plan. The ordinance establishes a separate account to manage the proceeds received from the opioid litigation settlements, generally sets forth the permissible uses of the funds, and establishes a general framework for the disbursement of money from the account and oversight and reporting measures to ensure funds are used in a manner consistent with the national opioid settlement agreements, this ordinance, and the local abatement plan.
Comments, discussion?
I'd just make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
This has, Zach, your concurrence?
It does, yes. Drafted by our office.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve as submitted, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, 5-0. Thank you very much.
Will he present?
Next item under Tab 12 is the Washington County Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. Michelle Gordon.
Thank you. I am here today to ask for a motion to approve the ordinance regarding the establishment of the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. The county has received one-time conversion fees and cannabis sales and use tax funds. Those funds are maintained in a separate special revenue fund and represented on the financial statements as restricted cash reserves and restricted fund balance. Staff anticipates that as long as the state does not modify the existing statute, the county will receive approximately $250,000 annually for community-based initiatives through the state's CRRF, which was established under 1-322 of the Maryland State Statute, Article Alcoholic Beverages and Cannabis. The purpose of the funds is to provide funds for community-based organizations that serve communities determined by the Maryland State Office of Social Equity. that serve communities determined by the Maryland State Office of Social Equity in consultation with the Maryland State Office of the Attorney General to have been most impacted by the disproportionate enforcement of cannabis prohibition prior to July the 1st of 2022. Restricted CRRF cannabis sales tax may only be used for community-based initiatives that focus on low-income and disproportionately impacted areas in ZIP Code 21740. ZIP Code 21740 includes parts of the city of Hagerstown and parts of the unincorporated areas of the county which are outside of the city. The fund consists of sales and use tax revenue distributed under Tax General Article, conversion fees paid by businesses under a separate tax article, and any other money from any other sources accepted for the benefit of the fund and in accordance with any conditions adopted by the comptroller for the acceptance of those donations. The funds may only be used for funding community-based initiatives intended to benefit low-income communities, funding community-based initiatives that serve disproportionately impacted areas, and any related administrative expenses. Money may not be expended for the fund- from the fund for law enforcement agencies or activities. Money expended from the fund is supplemental to and may not supplant any funding that is otherwise or would- that otherwise would be appropriated for pre-existing local government programs. Essentially what that says is you cannot use that to fund existing programs. You can use it to fund expansion of programs or new programs. Eligible programs are typically programs that are administered by the county, and funds may be used for the following types of categories. Now, this list is not all-inclusive. Some of those categories include mental health and substance abuse services, education and after-school programs, small business grants, parks and recreational facilities, criminal justice reform and reentry, which are services that are provided by our day reporting center, and housing and homeless prevention. To date, the county has expended no funds from this special revenue fund. At this time, staff is recommending that the ordinance be drafted for your review and approval, and that is included in your attachment. The Grants Management Department will guide the use of the county's restitution funds and ensure that funds are allocated and spent on permissible CRRF expenditures that align with the Board of County Commissioners's strategic goals. Additionally, the Grants Management Department will develop reporting and for submission to the B.O.C.C. on a regular basis. Funding decisions will be made upon the recommendation of the Grants Management Department, reviewed by the county administrator, and finalized upon approval from the Board of County Commissioners in a regular meeting. I also would like to let you know that the statute requires us to hold a public hearing and gain public input regarding the use of funds here in Washington County. That public hearing will be scheduled at a later date and must be scheduled before we can expend any funds from the CRRF fund. Monies from the CRRF fund may be dispersed to both governmental and non-governmental entities for the county programs for community-based programs. Requests from non-departmental agencies seeking funds will be required to submit an application, and departments seeking funds may request funding through the Grants Management Department. All applicants will be required to outline adequate plans for data tracking and reporting that align with state and county requirements. Do I have any questions at this time? I need a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the ordinance. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, five oh. Thank you. Anything else?
I think that's everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, under tab 13, is Recognition of Manufacturing Month, October 2025. Good morning, Linda.
As we continue- Oh, Linda Spence, Department of Business and Economic Development. Sorry about that. Just taking after you there. So as we continue celebrating Manufacturing Month this October, I'm excited to highlight two more amazing local manufacturers. Before we get to the videos, here's a quick bit of background. Washington County is home to about 120 manufacturers who together contribute $1.1 billion to our local economy each year. Today's videos feature just two of those. The first one is MediSign, an advanced manufacturing company on Twin Springs Drive in Cape Town. They've developed a connected health platform that includes digital patient whiteboards and display systems for hospitals. Pretty cool stuff, I think. That's changing how healthcare communities. The second is Volvo Group Trucks, Mack Trucks. They've been part of the Hagerstown area since 1962, have been cranking out powerful engine blocks under the Mack Trucks brand for an incredible 125 years. Little fun fact here. Washington County's Economic Development Commission, now the Washington County Department of Business and Economic Development, was actually created in 1959 to assist the smooth location of Mack Trucks. So we're very proud of that. So let's roll the videos and celebrate the innovation, hard work, and horsepower that keeps Washington County manufacturing strong.
So we're part of the team that build Volvo trucks, Mack trucks, Volvo coaches, and Volvo buses. And this is our one and a half million-square-foot facility where a lot of hard work and innovation takes place.
Volvo Powertrain is part of the Mack organization, too. And Mack's like an iconic company inside the United States. Volvo represents safety and performance. So between the two companies, I believe we can recruit a lot of different people. The different type of people we're looking for are skill sets, good in communication, good in problem solving, and like to work with teams. We also have a lot of innovation, so people got to be curious.
We have a state-of-the-art powertrain research and development lab and also a powertrain engine development lab, as well as a $42 million brand-new vehicle propulsion lab. And all of these are to push the boundaries of sustainable transportation. We manufacture the engines, axles, transmissions, and the modular power boxes for our zero-emission electric vehicles.
First of all, I think it's pretty cool that we build an engine every two and a half minutes. The fact that parts come from all over the world inside our plant, and we build an engine, axle, transmission, and they come off the line every two and a half minutes is so fascinating for me. I get excited about coming to work every single day.
Mack Trucks celebrated their 125th anniversary, and we've been in Washington County, Maryland since 1961, making us the heart of manufacturing here in this area.
The MediSign Solution is a healthcare platform that not only helps hospitals communicate exceptionally well with their patients, but also helps them with complex clinical challenges that hospitals face nationwide. So what the MediSign Solution is, is a series of communication devices that are utilized in acute care hospitals all across the nation to replace traditional dry erase whiteboards in the patient room where the nurse would write your information, your care team, your plan of care for the day, and replaces that with an automated digital solution that allows the patients to get all of the information they need in real time, completely accurate, completely up-to-date, and also segues into the clinical care and safety elements. Now, this also expands outside of the patient care rooms into the hallways. So there's a staff-facing solution which helps with coordination of care, also understanding the patient environment that you're walking into. This helps us keep healthcare workers safe and informed, which ultimately improves outcomes. And our next employee, very important aspect, is attention to detail and also a desire to continually better oneself. A lot of people are looking for particular certifications or particular skill sets, but a lot of those, we find, can be trained into an individual as long as that individual has the desire to improve, the desire to better themselves, and a lot of attention to detail.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
How many manufacturers are in Washington County?
One hundred and twenty.
There were not all warehouses.
They are not all warehouses. And so thank you, and we want to thank our manufacturers, especially this one, so.
How many warehouses are in the county and how many are in the boundary of the city?
Sixty-five. Is that right?
You should ask me, I would have told you.
Good, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Next up, tab 14, Agricultural Faces of Farming Presentation. Kelsey, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Cadel, Agricultural Business Specialist for the Department of Business and Economic Development. Today, our Faces of Farming videos continue the short series that began at the AgXbonfire this year, giving a glimpse into just a few of the nearly 900 family farms operating here in Washington County. Each of these farms represent a small but very important part of our county's strong agricultural foundation built on hard work, dedication, and lasting commitment to farming and the community. October is Maryland Horse Month, a time to recognize the important role horses have played in our state's history and the part that they still continue to hold today. While jobs on the farm have changed over the years, some here in Washington County still use horses to check fence lines, work cattle, and even help with the occasional bit of fieldwork. More often, though, you see these horses in the pleasure side of agriculture, out on trails, in the show ring, or simply enjoyed for the connection and the peace that they bring to life on the farm. Many local farms breed horses, contributing to the next generation of these animals and supporting both the equine community and the agriculture economy. A number of the farms also offer horse boarding and self-guided trails as a form of agritourism and value-added agriculture, creating new ways to welcome the public while supporting their farm income. October is also National Pork Month, a time to recognize the farmers who raise pigs and the important role that they play in the local food system. According to the 2022 USDA Census of Agriculture, Washington County is home to over 3,400 hogs and pigs. These animals are cared for by the hard-working farmers who help feed our community and support the local economy. In our second video, we will see the next generation of farm kids learning the skills and responsibility needed to care for these animals, caring for the traditions and values that keep Washington County agriculture strong.
My name is Stephanie March. I am part of Stephanie March Equitation. There are three basic divisions going on. There's pleasure, there's hunters, and then there's a dressage. Within each of the division, they're doing classes that are judged on the horse, and then there's equitation classes, which are being judged on how the rider rides. And so whenever the class is being judged on the horse, it's how the horse goes, how obedient the horse is. Of course, the rider has to be doing her job for that all to happen. In the equitation classes, the judge is looking at her position, is she making all the right cues for the horse to listen? But again, the horse has to listen to those and be good. So it's a partnership all the time. One is just the main judging is on the horse, or the main judging is on-
Our kids are usually getting their projects in March of each year, so they have them until the fair in the middle of July. The expectation is that they're feeding and caring for their pigs every day. They should be washing them every day. And then obviously, because they're show animals, we're also training them. So they should have them out walking them every day. A lot of the kids like to just sit and lay with their pigs. They're kind of like dogs. So it's a really good experience, but it's a lot of work, and it teaches our kids a lot of responsibility and time management.
I like showing pigs because, one, it's fun to work with them because I just like playing with them because you always have that downtime with them when you can just rub on them, love with them, and connect with them. Because your pig will not show good for you if you don't like connect with them. They can be scary at first, but once you get to love them, they can be the sweetest thing ever.
They're also expected to keep really detailed records. So just like a regular swine farmer would, they need to be keeping track of any medications that they give, any type of shots that they give, and then obviously, all of their finances. So how much their pigs cost, how much feed they're feeding, they're bedding. And then they do a record book at the end of the year where they do a cost analysis. Some of the kids make money and some don't, but it teaches them some money management skills.
I try to say between- Have him between me and the judge at all times, and I will look at the judge just to know that, hey, this is my pig. I want you to know my pig. And I want you to keep looking at my pig and know how happy I am with this pig.
We're not just growing animals. It is the work ethic, the responsibility, the dedication. They do majority of the work. They learn what it is to get up in the morning, work during the day, time management, and other life skills to prepare them for their future.
Thank you, Kelsey. Very good. Congratulations to all the youth in the farming community. Next item is Building Plan Examiner, Chip Rose.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chip Rose, Director of Human Resources. I think I have one relatively easy, straightforward item for you this morning. Staff is seeking approval to extend an offer to Bonnie Aguilar for position number 1887. This is the commercial business building plans examiner. The offer is for a grade 14, step six, at a salary of $79,260 a year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, five oh. Thank you. Next item under tab 16, Hagerstown Regional Airport Advisory Commission Appointment. Dawn.
Dawn Marcus, County Clerk. On behalf of the Hagerstown Regional Airport Advisory Commission, I am requesting a motion to appoint John Kaby to serve a partial term through September 30th of 2026. This is not a paid board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval as submitted. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, five oh. Thank you. Last item is under tab 17, Potential Legislative Items. Zach.
Thank you, President Barr. Zachary Kiefer, County Attorney. Before you for discussion only, I don't- I'm not asking for a motion today, is the potential list of legislative items for the upcoming legislative session. This is a discussion about potential issues the county may like to see addressed during the next session of the General Assembly. The next regular session of the General Assembly begins in January 2026. The county should begin to identify matters that require legislative action. Potential items suggested to date include, and you'll see some duplication off the community coalitions list, excuse me, as well. But these include I-81 widening, funding for air traffic control tower at Hagerstown Regional Airport, I-70 interchange improvements, state funding of priority transportation projects, transition of county treasurer from elected to appointed position, revise the Maryland Code Local Government Article 28203. The county- This is a county salary study commission subtitle to replace the Cumberland Valley Associated Builders and Contractors Representative with a representative from the Home Builders Association of Washington County or other interest group. Revise the Health General Article 8406, zoning of halfway houses to remove the language that deems small halfway houses a single-family dwelling and large halfway houses a multi-family dwelling. Review dimensional minimums of manufactured homes that are now permissible in residential zoning districts. Loosening statutory or regulatory restrictions to allow property owners on septic systems to repair elements of their septic systems, excuse me, and exempt them from having to replace or upgrade septic to best available technology. And finally, revise the Washington County Code of Public Local Law, Section 6503E, to include a monetary penalty of $500 for misdemeanor restraint or hindrance of the right of public works employee to enter upon premise in performance of their duties. And I'll open this up for discussion amongst the commissioners at this time for any additional legislative priorities to be added. Thank you. Thank you.
We would like to get a formal consensus regarding this from all of the commissioners.
Any discussion, comments?
I'm going to keep moving forward.
Thank you.
As presented.
I see a lot of heads nodding, so I think we have consensus.
Head nods from Derek and Randy Leatherman, John Farn, Randy Wagner, all five. So five oh, okay.
Great, thank you, Commissioners. That's all I have.
Very good. That is the last item under open session. I'd like to-
I have a question.
Yes.
Back to Linda Spence and Kelsey's presentations. Who did the videos for us? Was that outside work or did we do that?
That was outside work.
Outside?
I believe one room media does that.
That's all.
Okay, okay. Looking for a motion to go into closed session for the reasons stated, which is discuss confidential personnel matters and to consult with legal counsel.
Motion to go in closed session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, five oh, can we take a five-minute recess? Thank you.